Welcome to the Monday, May 4th, 2020 Groveland Selectmen's Meeting. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, reorganization of the Board. Bill, you wanted this put on the agenda?
Yeah, I think in light of our chairman's recent and rather abrupt resignation, in light of the circumstance we have here with the extension of the election now to the mid of June, that we should reorganize the Board to pick a chair and a vice chair in light of these unexpected circumstances.
May I just make a quick comment? So I know you're saying in light of these circumstances. The Board always reorganizes the first meeting in May. So this is the normal meeting when you would normally reorganize on an annual basis. Just so you're aware.
I wasn't aware.
Generally, they always reorganize right after the election, and it just happens that that is generally in May.
Yeah, it's always the first Monday in May. Well, the first Monday meeting in May, I should say.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I'm running for election, so maybe I will make it back on or not make it back on. But I do think that I thought about this after it was brought up to put it on the agenda, that it makes sense to stay on schedule so that whomever is put into the chair and vice chair has their full year in the position. Otherwise, you know, we're delaying it and they're getting less than what would normally be the appointment time for that position. I would just say this is the proper meeting to do it at.
Well, I would expect that right after the election, the first meeting after the election, that there'd be a reorganization of the Board at that time. They're obviously going to have one new member. And so I would think that you would reorganize again after you have the election. And it just seems to, you know, only a month away, but whatever people feel. Mike?
I could go either way. I mean, normally, we do it the first meeting of May. I'd as well stick with that. But, I mean, normally, there's an election that goes along with it, so it's kind of half and half. But I have no problem keeping with the same schedule and, you know, keeping the full year or whatever it is.
So this would be just for a month, and then reorganize again after the election?
Or it would be up to the Board at that point if you wanted to reorganize after the election.
So we would vote to reorg now and then have a vote, and then if a motion came forward a month later to have a vote, that motion would either have to pass or not pass to move forward.
The Board can reorganize any time someone calls for a motion and second sit and it passes. So you could reorganize three times, four times, five times a year if you wanted to, as long as the majority of the Board wanted to reorganize. It's the will of the Board. So, yes. So if there's a motion and a second and it passes now, it could be for a month, it could be for a year, it could be for six months. It really depends on how the Board is operating.
Well, I mean, whichever way you do it right now, I think at the very least, we have to vote a chair. We don't have a chairman any longer, and we didn't anticipate this. So to operate without a chairman is not a smart move. So I don't see why you don't just go with a reorganization now. And then because of this unusual election year, you could always commit to just putting it on the agenda again at the first meeting after the election, just as a courtesy, to see if there's any more feedback. I mean, I don't feel like we need to beat ourselves up about this, but we don't have a chairman right now. We need to appoint a chairman. So...
Yeah, and potentially, we could have two new Board members.
You could. Exactly.
And if I was one of them, I would like to have a seat in chair and vice chair at that point in time after the election. So I wouldn't be opposed to reorganizing it again after the June elections.
Or at least taking the vote to do it.
Or at least taking the vote to do it. You know, I'd be amenable either way.
Makes no difference to me.
Okay, so what, how do you feel? How do you want to proceed?
Well, I'll make a motion that we reorganize the Board, to the very least, for the June 15th election.
Are you making a motion of someone to reorganize with, or you're just making a motion? It's already on the agenda. You don't need to make a motion to reorganize because it's already on here.
That's why Denise is here. Peaches and wine. Then what am I trying to say, I guess?
Well, I think the first thing would be if you're going to make a motion for a chair and/or vice chair would be what you do, or just chair and however you want to do it.
Well, in that case, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Selectman Wood as chair.
Okay, motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion? Yeah, just some comments. I mean, I think your personal feelings for me have taken over your professionalism or lack thereof, and also your common sense. I mean, your personal feelings for me are showing through that, and that's the real reason that you're going through this. And so I'm opposed to it, but it's the will of the Board. And I think that the last two meetings that I have chaired, I think we did a pretty decent job. Normally in any positions that the vice chair takes over, if the chair is absent or resigns, that's always the case. And I understand you're going to do a reorganization, but it just seems like you would elevate the vice chair to chair and then select a new vice chairman. But that doesn't seem like the way you want to go. First following Robert's Rules of Order. Go ahead, Bill.
Is those comments directed toward me or to the Board in general?
To the Board in general.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, the motion on the floor. Kathy, go ahead.
Yes. First of all, I have not directed any emotions, anger, anything against you, Selectman Watson. I think you did a very good job stepping up and running the meetings. But I don't know of any Robert's Rule that automatically makes the vice chairman into a chairman without a vote of the committee. And we do need to appoint a chairman. We are at that point where it is typically the time to do an annual appointment of a chairman. And I don't take this personally one way or the other. My neck is on the chopping block for the election. Maybe I'll be fortunate enough to be reelected, but I have the most to lose right now than anyone on the Board if you really like being on this Board. So I have no completely transparent, and I don't like when people say things on camera that cast aspersions on other people's character, because I think it's very unfair. And I think we all try to do the very best we can. I think Selectman Watson stepped right up there and ran the meetings and did exactly what was needed to be done, and I thank you for that. But I think your comment that this is being done from an emotional basis or for some other agenda is just incorrect. And I think I have a right to speak for myself and say that is not why I agree to appoint a chairman. I'm agreeing to appoint a chairman because we do not have a chairman, and it is time for the annual appointment.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? None. All in favor of Mike Wood? Two in favor, opposed, one, one abstention. Mike will take over as chairman.
So we've still got to nominate a vice chair, then, correct?
Correct.
If you want to reorganize the vice chair rule as well, yes.
So do we have a motion to nominate vice chair?
Well, there's only, there's only Bill left because Ed served for a year, and I might not be here. So I would think it would be unwise to put someone like myself in that position at this point.
So are you making a motion?
I would say yes, I'd make a motion to appoint Bill O'Neill as the vice chairman.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion? Ed, anything?
No, I have nothing.
All right, no further discussion. All in favor? All opposed?
Opposed.
One abstain. Okay, that was fun. Now let's go to COVID-19 discussion. Claire?
So, we are up to 14 cases in Groveland as of this past weekend. And we've had one hospitalization since we last spoke. It sort of looked like, you know, a positive case with pneumonia on top of it. That's what it sounds like, okay? Person's doing well, is home now, and, you know, hopefully, everything will go well. And I brought in a sheet of statistics, and Groveland is in the bottom five of this list for Essex County. We are the highest in that bottom list. We have 14 cases. The lowest is five in West Newbury. But we're still, you know, when you compare us to the cities in Essex County, you know, 2,000 down to 576. Okay, so you've got Lynn Lawrence, Peabody, Havrell, and Methuen in that order. Okay, so Lynn's the highest. So, you know, the cities are just, they're more crowded, you know, and there are more ethnic groups in the cities. When the ethnic groups come into cities, they have a tendency to bring their whole family in from wherever they come from. They live together in an apartment or a home, and, you know, it's just, it's too crowded for something like this to really work out to any kind of advantage. So we've had four healthcare people test positive, three nurses, and one physical therapist. Everyone else is doing well, has recovered. We have three people currently positive, okay, and they're on quarantine, along with three houses. Okay. One situation is two houses on the same property. So it's a little complicated, but it's, you know, people that were exposed to the people that tested positive. So there's actually three quarantine houses, which isn't too bad. All things considered, it's not bad.
Yeah, I was going to say, even though our numbers have ticked up incrementally each week, it's still very low. The people are doing still a very good job, especially when you look at some of the neighboring towns that are similar in size, that have double what we have currently. I still think we're doing a very good job, and we, again, still have to maintain that course, but...
Yeah, and, you know, we really have to thank the citizens of Groveland for, you know, stepping up to the plate and doing what needs to be done to keep this under wraps. They've done a great job.
Obviously, those numbers are going to change weekly. They'll probably go up, but if we keep that increase to a minimum, then I think, you know, we'll be in good shape. And, you know, hopefully, in a month or two, we'll start to see a decrease in numbers. But anybody have any comments? Bill?
Real quickly, I don't think the fact, along with the denser population in some of the cities, that a lot of these Lynn Lawrence, you find a higher population of blue collar workers, have been deemed essential workers, the custodians in the hospitals, the caretakers, the orderlies, things like that, the folks that were deemed essential. So they go up and they show up to work every day, like a lot of the grocery stores, the kids, the folks that are operating in the grocery stores, Home Depot, things like that. So I don't think that that part of it should be overlooked, too, as why they might have a higher incidence of cases in those cities as opposed to just the denser populations and the higher ethnic minorities.
It's possible, Bill. It really is.
And I think there's a lot of contributing factors there.
There are. I've noticed particularly at Market Basket, the kids aren't there. It's the older folks that are bagging. You know, the kids just, I would assume the parents aren't letting them go to work during this time.
Yeah, I was there today, and there was probably a good mix of both. But I can see that that might be the thinking from some parents, that some of the younger kids probably shouldn't be there. But even the older people shouldn't be there, so it's...
Well, that's what I was thinking the first time I saw the older folks there.
I do see a lot of young kids there, and I remind them all the time, they have the face mask, they have the gloves, and then they scratch their face. And I go, "Don't stop." You're all protected, but if you scratch your face, you just throw it all away," you know. But I've seen with big canisters, and they do a pretty good job. And I think Market Basket is probably one of the best as far as keeping the number of people in the stores down, social distancing, spacing aisles one way. I think they've done an extraordinary job with trying to do the best they can under these circumstances. And they should all be, you know, recognized for their outstanding work in keeping us all fed, because if it wasn't for them, a number of us would be, surely, would be angry right now. So 14, there haven't been any deaths of those 14 cases, those serious hospitalizations?
Just this one recently, this past week.
And as of today, we've had how many recovered completely now?
Well, we have 13 active cases. Okay, so we've had 11.
14 cases.
We've got 14.
14 cases, excuse me.
Active?
Total.
Total. Total positive cases. Okay, we've had 14. Okay, so we're down to 11.
11 have recovered, if there's only the three most recent ones.
Right.
So 11 have recovered out of 14?
Right.
That's a very good percentage. Is there anything else that this Board can do for you or for the Board of Health to, again, assist in your tasks and your job and your whatever needs to get done?
You know, you're weighing calls here and there from different people requesting different things, you know. So I've been in contact with the Council on Aging for a couple of things, and they've, you know, taken over, and they were going to reach out and do what they can do. Because really, what we're doing from the Board of Health standpoint is what we're doing now, basically.
I think I can speak for the Board when I say that if there's anything we can do to assist you that, you know, we'd like to know, and I think we'd all be open to doing whatever we could to assist you and the Board of Health or whatever the residents of the town need. So please don't be shy to ask, not to shy.
I think by encouraging people is very, very important.
I do that. Maybe you can help me with something, because there are, there is a certain faction of the population out there that I cannot seem to convince of the seriousness of this. And I'm not sure how to...
How are you getting this information?
How am I getting what information?
The information that they don't take it seriously.
By the meetings and the conversations I have with some people in the streets and in the stores, that they are, seem to be fed up, exhausted, they run out of stamina, they don't believe this is all necessary, they think this is overblown, they think this is just not real. I can point to the 68,000 deaths, I can point to the million cases, I can point to a number of things, but I have trouble convincing some people. And I'm not saying it's a great majority. It's by far a small minority that I run into. But there are some out there that I don't know if they haven't come to grips with it or what it is, but I find these people, how do you deal with them? Maybe you can help me deal with some of them to bring them back into reality.
It's difficult to educate people sometimes. You know, you can try and discuss what's going on and explain different things. And I've found over the years that giving examples is a good way to convince people that this is real. You know, we're not making it up. It's definitely real, and we need to pay attention if we're going to get through this. It's not going to go away until we find some sort of a vaccine or, you know, a medication that's going to avert it.
Right. Well, thank you. I'll try to use that in my next conversation with people. But it is difficult.
It is. It's not easy.
And I understand, at this time of the year, I'd be coaching at least two baseball teams, maybe three. I'd be watching and enjoying my son play senior year in baseball, graduations. I'd be going to the beach, we'd be having barbecues. I'd be planning Memorial Day barbecue with the family. I get it, it's difficult. But we're all in this together. We're either going to sink or float as one, right?
We need to win. And in order to win, we have to do it together.
We need everybody pulling the rope in the same direction. We got one person pulling the rope in a different direction, and it just, it impedes our progress from getting to the finish line, would you say?
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ed?
Claire, just clear up. 14 cases, 11 recovered, three active. Are they three separate households, two or one, the three active cases?
There are two people in one particular house. One particular house had contact with that house, okay? They're related, in other words. So they're all on quarantine, okay? Then this last person that came in positive over the weekend, there's just one person in that house. But the house is quarantined because she has someone living with her.
Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
So that's kind of how the quarantine goes. It gets a little confusing sometimes.
Kathy, you there?
Yeah, thank you, Claire, for everything you're doing. I know, I've watched the news. Some days, I can't watch it. I just said I'm not watching. But I do try to keep track. They've talked about that the curve is flattened. That's where we were at the flattening of it, they say.
It's plateaued.
Plateaued, or we're flat. But I think that's kind of testing our patience, I suppose, because we're all ready to break free and run around back to where we were, which is not the way it's going to go.
We can't have false hopes.
Yes.
We have to really go by statistics.
Yep.
And that's the most important thing. We have to listen to the physicians that are working on this day and night. And, you know, these guys are, I mean, they know their business. Out of all the doctors I've worked with, as a group, you know, I mean, they're all, most of them are pretty smart, you know. But this group, epidemiology, is one of the smartest groups going.
Exactly. And some of the presentations have spoken of, and again, we'll never know because it didn't happen, but there's a, there are some calculations of deaths that have been avoided perhaps because of what we're doing.
Well, we don't know if our statistics are correct, either.
Of course, naturally.
You know, I mean, I've been looking at this stuff now for quite a while, and it's like, this isn't right, you know. But it's kind of hard to determine.
But can I ask you, from your, how many years of nursing have you had? You've had a lot, right?
Oh, you don't want to know.
It's like, let's go over, let's just say, you're very well equipped to answer this question, then. Is this the most contagious virus that you have seen?
In my career as a nurse?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I think that's the answer to the question, when people keep saying, "Why, why?" Because it's so highly contagious, and we don't quite understand that.
I mean, the thing that I remember as a kid is polio, you know?
Okay.
That's the only thing I could liken this to.
But was, do you think polio was this contagious?
No.
Okay.
I mean, not from what I've read.
Yeah, it was more serious, perhaps. But the contagious part of this is what's causing all of the locking down of things to try and slow it down while the really smart people work on what we can do about it.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Denise?
So I just have two quick things for you, Claire. So the first one is, we got the second round of the emergency funding today. So that additional money just came in today. And then more, it's just a comment for our residents that might be watching. There is some time delay from when folks are getting a positive test result to when Claire is being notified through the state system. So if you are being tested and you are getting a positive result, you need to start quarantining immediately, even before you hear from her, because there was a lag of, I think, four or five days last week. So just be sure that if you are getting a positive result, you can either reach out to Claire through the Board of Health directly or wait until she contacts you. But you should start quarantining immediately, just because there is that delay.
Excellent point.
Should we wait until the result is positive, or once the test is administered on the belief that they may be positive?
People know, Bill, that they've tested positive.
Right away?
Before the state does.
Yeah.
Not all the time, not all the time, okay?
Well, it goes, they get tested positive, and then the facility that tests them goes into the system. That system then notifies your system where you can log in.
It depends on where they're tested.
Right.
Okay, as to how fast the results get in.
Right. So if I go in and I get tested today, and I say, "Hey, Mike's positive," that alert to her might take five days to get there. So it would be beneficial for me to quarantine myself immediately and/or notify Claire immediately. But that's on the person.
I've spoken to two people recently, this week, you know, that found out before it came up on the state charting that they were positive. So I didn't know, you know, if it hadn't been for them calling me, then I wouldn't have known until it showed up.
So there's a major delay in that system.
That's a problem.
It is, obviously.
But I don't know how you fix it, because some of these tests take three days, even if they're done locally. Others, they get them, you know, like within a few hours.
Few hours, yeah. There's a big discrepancy on how long it takes for those to come back, depending on who's doing it and where they're doing it.
When they first started, they were sending them, like, to Mayo Clinic, you know, and it was taking forever. It was taking a week to get results back.
Claire, you're answering the questions that people have asked. And it says, "How many recovered? How many active?" How many households? I think it's pretty good. And these are the questions that the people are asking me, if we know. How many, how many people recovered? Seems to be the big one, more so than how many cases.
No one has died. We had a man who had lived in Groveland for many years who passed away at a nursing home in Havrell, unfortunately. And, you know, many of us knew him. Great man, great family, and, you know, so a lot of people thought that he counted as one of our numbers, but he didn't, because he had been in the nursing home for probably four or five years at least, you know. So that's just one that I know that's passed away.
Okay, anybody have anything else for Claire? Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a discussion on the yard waste site again. Anybody have any? Denise?
So Rennie and I spoke today about the yard waste. What we came up with that I will present to you is what we thought at least for the next two weeks until we see what's happening after May eighteenth. We spoke to the highway staff and the cemetery staff. And they would be willing to come in on overtime, but on Saturdays from eight to two for the ninth and the sixteenth and hold the yard waste site open. With checking registrations, keeping traffic at bay, directing folks how to go in and out and where to dump. We thought that would be a good start and then see at our meeting on the eighteenth either what we'll do going forward or if this is working, we can keep this up. The guys are willing to do this if it needs to be for a longer term before we start going back to sort of weekdays. So I thought that was a good option that will allow folks to get rid of their yard waste that they currently have stockpiling. And if the board agrees to that, I can put it out in the call tomorrow in our weekly statement, letting folks know that it would be open from eight to two starting just on Saturdays for the next two and then we'll reevaluate.
What, how many people were they thinking they would need to do that?
So I think he was using, it's definitely three, possibly four. One at the gate, one possibly dealing with cars coming in and then two sort of inside dealing with, they were talking about where they could have the cars come in and around the salt shed to sort of keep traffic moving.
Everyone goes in one side, everyone comes out the other side.
And then everyone comes out around there. So Rennie spoke to the guys and like I said, two of them were definite, one was not working today. So we hadn't heard back from him. And then he spoke with Chuck at the cemetery who would be interested as well. So I think that's probably all we would need, three or four for the time being. But I just figured I told Rennie that I would bring it to you guys today and I'd let him know.
I think, at least at first thought, I think that's a logical approach. You know, it's a small opening. It's trying to mitigate people congregating in any one location down there and trying to keep things moving. Anybody else any comments? Kathy?
Yeah, and I mean, it comes from, we're working in such a difficult situation because just our last meeting, we agreed that only two highway workers could be together at the same time without the mask on. And it sounds like now we'd be putting
Well, they won't be together.
But I mean, we said, okay, on the shift, we were trying to keep them separate so that they couldn't all be out sick at the same time. And if we put four people on this site and one of them tests positive, would all four of them have to be?
No, because they're not going to be near each other. That's the whole thing. We're going to have, they're going to be all over the site.
One at the gate, one at the site.
Okay, so we wouldn't have that.
They're not going to be working together in a group.
Okay, so we wouldn't have that problem. But we would have to pay them overtime. We couldn't work this out because they're not working all the days of the week. They wouldn't.
Well, that's something we probably have to discuss with the union. But we offered it, if we're asking them to give up a Saturday. We have money in the budget. We haven't, there hasn't been overtime because nothing's going on. We thought we would offer overtime for the Saturday hours.
Is that it for now?
Yeah.
I'd like to get some more input before we kind of talk about overtime and some other things.
Okay.
Ed, yeah?
How many at a time down there? Were they, four would be working at a time?
Three.
It's three definitely, possibly four if the fourth employee wanted to participate.
So they need, say, could you just run through where they, one would be at the front of the driveway?
One would be at the gate, one would likely be at the front of the driveway dealing with the traffic. One would be at the gate checking registrations. And then two would be somewhere, one at the pile and one sort of directing around where to go.
Anything else, Ed? No, I'm all set.
My only big concern is, and I've worked around town, I don't think America's yards and gardens are going to be any better than they are this year. Everybody's just going to town on they have nothing better to do. My biggest concern now is we all rush to that, the city yards, town yards, all at once. Is there a way that maybe we could break it up by geographical area?
Now you're doing another layer on top of that.
Already shot down.
I think that's why, if we can keep it, you know, if we have them going in all the way around, I mean, you could fit a long number of cars. They just can't get out of their car until they're told to. You know, I'll certainly let the police know they can sort of keep an eye on it. But, you know, hopefully people just go in, dump their stuff and get out.
And I would also think that people would realize that it could be a madhouse down there initially and to try to schedule it out. Maybe not be down there at seven fifty-nine, you know, maybe try to go around lunch or towards the tail end or something. Let some other people, maybe some of the older people who want to get rid of their stuff, do their stuff first. Same thing like the Market Basket. Well, that's what I would think, a rational response.
The line of cars are going to go all the way down to sales.
Right.
That's my, my only concern right now. I mean, I'd love to get rid of stuff too.
And we did talk about that, Rennie and I. But quite frankly, we felt that the roads are quiet right now anyways. It's not like there's a ton of people out and about. So even if there was some backup, it's not going to cause a lot of commotion, I don't think.
We want to give it a try this weekend and see how it went and if it was a complete disaster, we shut it down again. If it goes smoothly, we keep it going.
Well, I would respectfully ask that we at least commit to the two. That way we can give people two choices so that everyone doesn't rush the Saturday. Maybe people, some people wait till the following Saturday.
Wait to two Saturdays.
So at least if we just commit to two Saturdays and see how it goes and then if it's not working out or maybe we open it back on the regular Wednesday, Saturday after the eighteenth. But at least this way we could give folks two options and, you know, I can say something, you know, not, we, you know, we kindly ask that everyone not rush there at eight o'clock on this coming Saturday. But, but at least that way people can plan a little bit ahead.
But then what if no one's there?
I get more calls and emails on this than anything else, so.
I know.
I agree, you know, the two, set two Saturdays is probably the best thing. And then ask people to be logical and rational about this. You just, you know, you don't need to be down there at seven fifty-nine and you don't
Socially responsible.
So, I mean, I got stuff I want to get rid of too, but, you know, maybe I'll wait till next weekend or maybe I'll wait till just before lunch or something like, just be rational about it. The other thing that I will reiterate again is that I'll volunteer if they need more people down there. You know, if they need some more hands, just more people to wave people around or check registrations, I guess is what we're doing.
Yeah, I will
I'll do that too.
I'll let you, I just, it becomes a liability when we have volunteers if there's cars and things, so.
Look at the face.
Work for the town.
Unloading stations.
I'm not sure about that. He was talking about cones and putting cones around and I don't know how detailed he'll make it or if there's like, you know, one car pulls up, I'll leave that to him to decide.
Gate at once or is it one at a time?
No, it's a wide gate. So you can go in and out.
It's a wide, okay.
Yeah, you could go in and out. But I'll leave that to him and his crew to decide the logistics of, you know, how they'll make it work inside the gate.
So someone, we need to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion for the proposal as you've outlined it, for two Saturdays and then we'll get some feedback.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hey, we all agreed.
Please be rational.
Socially responsible.
Please.
You'd hate to shut it down, please.
Yep.
All right, so moving on to Washington Park cleanup discussion.
Yeah.
So there's an email
Yeah.
in your packet.
All right. Bill, you look like you have something to say?
No, I mean, as long as they, I can understand that the fields are going to become overgrown. We should discuss the same thing with the pines. If we're going to let the softball and take care of the softball field and the baseball field on a very limited basis so they don't get overgrown. So in the chance that they, we do have some activities in the fall, it's not so overgrown that it just becomes a
Mess.
Cost prohibitive to clean it up. And then it takes another month to get the fields in shape and that's another month away from getting the kids out there. But I don't have a problem as long as they adhere to the social distancing rules. They don't have, they don't bring a bunch of kids down there playing ball. They do their business and they get out of here. I think it's they got to save the fields that they're going to, they're just going to get ruined.
Ed, do you have anything?
No, I think it's a good idea. They spent a lot of money over Washington Park. The way the plan is set up, certainly workable. They need to mow the infield. Apparently the highway doesn't do that, do they just do the outfield? No, it makes sense.
Kathy?
Okay. Yes, this makes sense and I'll echo Selectman O'Neill's thought that, you know, I'm sure usually when the people that do this great work as volunteers do the work, they probably in the past have always been able to bring their children down. But in this case, I would ask respectfully, if they do not do that so that other children in the area don't get the idea that the park is open when it's not. So I like that they laid it all out, that they're, they'll be socially distanced, no more than three people working at a time, it says. And I thank them very much for even thinking, these are the things that, there's so many small details right now that are getting past us that you don't think of until, like you said, this would be so overgrown that it would become very expensive to repair.
Right.
So if, can we make a motion that would apply to, I guess, both of the, it's just the baseball type facilities that need this kind of a maintenance thing, right?
It's really the two baseball fields of Washington Park, the baseball field of the pines and the softball field of the pines.
Okay.
Before they become just overrun with weeds and things.
Right.
I think if we can let them get down there and just keep it up, it would be a good idea and save a lot of us time and money down the road. And to Selectman Watson's point, the highway department only cuts the grass in the outfield because from experience, when they cut the grass in the infield, they typically would shoot the grass clippings to the infield surface. And then in a week, you'd have the infield tract just overgrown with grass. So GBL made the decision a number of years ago when I was still on the board there to just ask the highway department to cut the grass in the outfield, shooting the clippings to the outfield. And we would, they would take care of the infills on both fields. They have smaller mowers and they keep the grass clippings tight. So just a point of information.
Yeah, I would say that along with the pine fields, the baseball field and the softball field down there, as long as it adhered to this type of structure of no more than three and they're keeping their distance and you're not bringing your kids down and you go down there, you do what you need to do and then you leave.
Right.
Then I think that that fits into, you know, what we're trying to do with the board and protecting the town and then what they're trying to do is to protect their investments in the field. So that's my personal opinion. I mean, the board can vote on it the way that they want, but I think that that is a good kind of compromise. Yep.
Should we add the soccer field on Main Street to that? I don't know if they have any maintenance that they have to do. But it seems if they do, maybe they'd like to be included.
They have any? I think it's just mowing.
We cut those, yeah, we cut the grass down there entirely.
So the highway department takes care of that field entirely?
Yeah, there was no, there's no dirt like you find on a baseball field. Nothing to keep, you know, weeds and grass off. The whole soccer field down there was all grass. That's what he wanted, I would think.
Yeah.
I don't think they have the issue that the baseball and softball fields
Well, we can always say, you know, they can come to us and maybe we're missing something and they can make a suggestion.
Okay.
You know, an amendment to that. But as for now, I think that we'll cover Washington Park and then the two fields down at the pines. And then if one of the other leagues says we're missing something, then by all means send us an email. So does someone want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to support the recommendation as outlined here with the additional line that the park is still closed to children. That the adults from these leagues that are going on, at most three people to do maintenance are permitted to do that. And we thank them for it.
And is your motion including the pines?
Yes, please.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Could we just send out a quick blurb to the folks in the Rec Committee? I know they're typically the ones that maintain about ninety percent of the pines, softball and the baseball field just so they know they are now permitted to do that work provided they maintain these same similar guidelines as GBL will. They may not know it, they may not be tuning in, so they might go right over their head.
Aren't you on the Recreation Commission Committee?
You know what? Because of this, we haven't really had many meetings.
He is, right?
He is.
So we're sending you a note.
Yeah. Here's a reminder. All right.
All right.
So we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Yes.
All right. So I guess we adjourn until five thirty?
Oh, okay.
Is that the, the line?
We pause.
I would, I would recommend adjourning this meeting entirely. I heard from the the public official that the executive session is scheduled for and he would like the meeting an open meeting. So I would say we adjourn this completely and we'll open a new meeting at five thirty and it will be a public meeting. And I will just say, because I have to change the Zoom, anyone who wants to listen on the Zoom meeting for that, the meeting ID will be eight five three two four zero nine one six six one.
Do you want me to write on paper so cases can put?
Well, it'll be on our, it's on our, well, it'll be on our website, but
Denise, should we adjourn or should we take a fifteen minute recess?
She's suggesting we adjourn.
I would recommend adjourning so we can have two separate meetings and not one meeting with a fifteen minute recess of recording. I would just recommend adjourning and reopening.
Motion to adjourn at five fifteen.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Stretch break. So this meeting will end and then I have to start a new meeting.
So that is a member of the, the member of the